Meeting is called to order. Sandra?
Mr. Sirianni?
Here.
Mr. Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
And Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Present. Any comments or observations on the agenda?
We approve the agenda without modification.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval, agenda is unanimously approved. Comments, as everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? The amendments, revisions, discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
In favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are unanimously approved. Comments and correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations in the audience on items not on the agenda, so, items not on the agenda, we have some members in the audience, would any of you care to approach the podium and address a topic not on the agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business, Mr. Director?
No unfinished business.
No unfinished business, we'll move to new business, public carrying, rezoning of parcels to industrial district M2, REZ 3852, 2023. Mr. Hopeful?
Yes, I'll give it from here if that's all right. So, we're calling this the technology zone rezoning. This is rezoning that has been initiated by the town of four parcels in the vicinity of McDevitt Drive and Germana Highway. What's being proposed, this is the conceptual layout that the property owner has submitted, it's nine buildings that are included within the development, the, zoom in a little bit closer so you can see, because a portion of the property does lie within Culpeper County. The buildings will be approximately 63 feet high, eight of them are within the town limits, one of them straddles the line, and so the building itself will actually be in the county. Four of the buildings within the town are estimated to be at about 264,000 square feet, and four of them at 190,000 square feet, so it's a total of about 1.8 million square feet within the town. The overall project is slightly over 2 million square feet. They have two separate access points, a primary and an emergency access proposed off of McDevitt Drive. As you can see, the site's got the proposed stormwater management down in the southern portion of the property, near where the future traffic circle at the intersection of McDevitt and Germana Highway is going to be. And there's existing wetlands in that area as well that are being preserved. So, we currently have a mix of zoning on the property, there are four of the parcels are zoned M1, light industrial, and one of them is zoned residential R1, and so what's being proposed is the M2 industrial district for all four of these particular parcels. When we look at it against the comprehensive plan, the first section that we looked at was the character area section, it's identified for mixed-use business, which calls for, to avoid single building developments, it wants walkable village-town centers, village development with walkable blocks. These are factors that we found to be essentially weaknesses with the application, that those are not compatible with what's being proposed. But the mixed-use business did also identify an economic development component to identify ways for the town to support new development, and it did meet that criteria. A more appropriate character area for this would have been the institutional, which is described as large land areas for industrial complexes with providing necessary buffering or transitions. The comp plan, though, when it looked at these institutional designations, only identified existing institutions within the town, so it only identified the existing schools, the hospital, and the VDOT facility, it didn't envision or contemplate any new institutional or industrial developments at that time. Looking at the future land use and the economic development sections of the comprehensive plan, from a future land use perspective, this area is identified for employment center use, which is to utilize existing available high-tech infrastructure, including industrial development, it specifically identifies M2 as an appropriate zoning district within this category. It's also specifically identified as one of the town's six growth areas, growth area three, which are identified for industrial and business development. It does also list there, though, a consideration for a mix of employment and residential. When looking at this category, we think that was likely in reference to the prior residential approvals that had been on this site. Look at the economic development component, part of the relevant sections in the comprehensive plan calls for the town to work to enhance the marketability of sites, and also to offer incentives to help attract new development. Looking at the transportation and public facilities and natural resources section, the comp plan does identify minor collector roads to run through this property, stemming, coming across the railroad tracks, connecting from Main Street, actually, essentially, or E Street, rather, all the way over to McDevitt Drive, and then connecting Germana Highway to East Chandler Street. Realistically, those roads are not terribly likely to ever be constructed, primarily due to the constraints of Norfolk Southern Railroad and the difficulties of getting a railroad crossing, as well as when you look at the topography coming off of Germana Highway, you've got a very steep slope going down, so to do that north-south connection to tie into East Chandler Street would also be extremely costly to do. Not to mention you also have wetlands in that vicinity as well, so it'll be largely impactful in that. From the natural resources chapter, it advocates for the protection of wetlands, which this proposal is doing, as well as the protection of natural resources and open space areas. So, again, while the development is in place, we'll touch on the proffers a little bit, but they helped to address that to some extent as well. Moving away from the comprehensive plan, the town recently adopted a technology zone, which encompasses this area and some of the surrounding parcels as well. What this does is that it offers incentive grants based on the real estate tax, machinery and tools, site plan permit review fees, as well as business and personal property tax in terms of grant rebates and incentives for businesses in a technology orientation to be located within these specific parcels. And so, really, we saw this as when you harken back to that language in the economic development section of the comprehensive plan, in terms of the town providing incentives, was a clear indication of support for development of technology-based business in this area. The property owner has also submitted proffers to go along with this rezoning, and these are commitments to the town, and so these are conformance with that conceptual development plan that was shown, a 50-foot vegetated buffer to be retained or installed along the public roads, 35-foot vegetated buffer to be retained or installed along the railroad track, a 50-foot vegetated buffer to be retained adjacent to residentially zoned properties. In the event that a residential site plan is approved on those properties, additional trees would be planted to enhance that buffer further. They've committed to providing an acoustic study and putting the appropriate mitigation measures in, light fixtures will be shielded down. They've also proffered to contribute $50,000 to the town for the protection of trees and pervious spaces, again, one of the concerns expressed by the planning commission was the loss of tree canopy with the development of the site, so they are attempting to provide some mitigation for that, which the town can then use at its discretion to preserve some of those trees in places where we have the opportunity to do so. And then they've also prohibited or ruled out certain impactful uses on the site itself. So, when we look at it on balance, there are clear strengths in the conference plan in terms of the development helping the town's tax base and the language that talks to that. It is cited appropriately in terms of the provision of infrastructure, both from a transportation and utilities perspective. It also has support in terms of the future land use and the economic development sections of the comprehensive plan. The one weakness, it comes from that mixed-use business character area, which would not be the appropriate one, ideally it would be an institutional designation. It is up to the commission to make an on-balance determination as to the appropriateness of this proposal. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have, there is a representative of the property owner here, if you have questions that are beyond my scope. But I will conclude the presentation with that.
Questions for the director?
Yes, Mr. Director, I see that one of the buildings is in the county, a similar process was started with the county to, to approximate what we're transitioning to.
I believe that they have the appropriate zoning there, where they have a potential conflict are the height restrictions within, with the county zoning ordinance, and so I believe that there is a text amendment in process on the county side to ensure that they are able to construct their buildings to an appropriate height and still meet the zoning requirements.
What is the text amendment?
Essentially, changing the regulation of the height restriction within the county's industrial zoning district.
So, basically, a waiver?
Not a waiver, it would change it across the board, so it's not unique, would not be unique to this property, but it would be the county evaluating that height restriction across all properties with that zoning designation.
So, it opens it up a little bit more. What is the current height?
I believe it's listed on there, on that table.
Yeah, for the county.
I know, the county, because they've got both the town and the county regulations there. Currently, it's a 45-foot limit in the county for their light industrial zoning district.
So, that's 18 more feet.
Mm-hmm.
That happens to be down in the hollow, so. Have any more questions for Mr. Director? I do have one for the applicant that comes around.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the director. We already have requirements for buffers and things between adjoining properties and uses, you'll have to refresh me, I guess, I didn't look, what are our current requirements and how are these, are they what we would require anyway, as far as lighting and trees, or is this an actual enhancement of what we would ask?
It's a fairly significant enhancement, particularly in terms of the buffering and screening.
Okay.
Essentially, what we would require is what we're requiring to be added to that existing preserved area if the residential site plan is approved. And again, proffers are, just to be clear, this is not what we're requiring, this is what the applicant is offering to the town as a mitigation for their impact. So, the requirement for the screening between residential and industrial would be essentially those two rows of trees that are listed there. They're proposing to do that, to enhance the existing 50-foot preservation that they're calling for with those trees of that nature, may not be in the two rows, but the same number of trees essentially would go in.
And the lighting restrictions, does this fall in line with what we would require, or is this, are they going above with the lighting as far as shielding?
This largely falls in with what we require, but it makes it a little clearer, a little easier to enforce, it gives us a little bit more teeth than simply measuring the light at the property line.
Mr. Director?
A few quick questions. It is nice to have the light stepped out that way, it's horizontal and measuring the foot candles, that clearly, pardon the pun, illuminates what's being offered there. With respect to the building height, does that include any HVAC equipment above the structure height?
They are able to add those on top per our code, the way our current code is structured, some of those accessory units that are necessary for the building operation are able to be added on and are not counted towards that height restriction.
And with that, are they offset in such a way that, you know, from the ground level, you'd be seeing the entire mass, or would they be set back so that visually you might not see them?
That I can't speak to, I mean, one of the things, though, that they did mention in this was the potential of parapet walls or things of that nature that essentially would obscure the visibility of the equipment.
Okay.
But when Mr. Cook, if he chooses to speak, maybe I can address that a little bit better. I think at this stage, they're still working on, I don't think, they certainly don't have final designs on the buildings themselves, but something of that nature could certainly be discussed.
Given the existing zoning, we could alternatively, if we weren't looking at this proposal, somebody could come in here and do a series of apartment buildings, would that be permissible, or that would be?
They would not be able to do apartment buildings.
By right, okay.
They could do some single-family detached units on the R1 portion.
Right.
But otherwise, for the most part at this stage, the residential approvals that had been there previously have expired, they no longer have the ability to do that because they had some grandfathered residential approvals for townhouses on the industrial parcels, but the general assembly finally allowed those to die. There are other ones that are getting extended, but those ones, those approvals have died, so they would no longer be valid, and so they would not be permitted.
Thank you.
What's the total area under consideration?
Of the site itself, I believe it's?
117 acres.
110 acres. I believe it's 86 acres, 86.77.
You're right. 115 per the site.
I'm sorry, 115, yeah, that's the lot coverage, yeah, 115.
Plus 34 acres in the pound.
Since part of the rationale for this is employment, it's one of the foreseen uses of the land, do we have any indication of what the expected employment is?
I don't, we can ask Mr. Cook, usually these are not significant generators of employment.
Right.
Do you want me to take the dice?
We need to wait until we open the public hearing, but.
Well, that's a, yeah. So, not significant, it's mostly machinery and.
Predominantly, there certainly will be some staff involved, but.
So, compared to, for example, office, office space use, pretty low.
It would be a lower employment generating factor than office space.
Okay, so that's a weak rationale in favor of this rezoning, or?
Well, that's largely where it's sort of that character area conflict came into play, was that call for more of that office space type development.
Do you have any sense when emphasis was placed on technology development, is that, do you have any sense of whether that is generic technology or a technology in the sense of, you know, people working on, what I'm talking about, building up the labor base, technology-specific labor base, or just importing more technological machinery into this town, borders of the town?
I think there's flexibility in that determination.
If this, if the rezoning is required, if this doesn't fit in with the characters, zoning character match that we have now, is the implication that, is there an implication for the revision of the zoning, excuse me, the zoning statute currently underway, that is, do we need to think about a zoning type that we don't have already for the future?
This is contemplated within the new zoning update.
Okay.
In greater detail than we have currently.
Right, so this would fit in well with what we expect, where we're moving to?
With the EX that is anticipated for this area, this.
It almost anticipates to some extent.
Correct.
Okay. That's all for me.
Mr. Chairman, another question occurred to me, I believe the director had mentioned at our work session, there was a planned meeting between the applicant and the owners, developers of Copper Ridge, can you share the outcome of that meeting?
Certainly, at that time, it was with myself and the representatives there, just to talk about some of their concerns, and it was largely based on screening, buffering, noise mitigation, or sound mitigation, and so I spoke with their representative today, and the one thing that they requested is that the proffers were subsequent to the conceptual development plan, so the conceptual development plan on the town side does not reflect the 50-foot buffer, vegetated buffer between their property and the proposed one, and so we'll likely be requesting that that be depicted there. It's in the proffer language, and so it is still binding, but request that it be depicted on the conceptual development plan as well.
Do we know if there will be any kind of a wall around the campus, or is it just?
I believe it is planned to be fenced, within the, you can see it marked on the conceptual development plan, it's not around the perimeter of the entire property, but around the perimeter of the buildings, for security reasons.
And there will be a dedicated substation?
Two.
Where's the other one? Oh, right, okay. Any other questions for the director? I'm going to open the public meeting. Members of the community, representative of the applicant, let's start with the representative of the applicant, if you'd like to approach the dice, please introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, my name is Adam Cook, managing director of development for the Peterson Companies, and thank you to the commission for hearing our case tonight. I am happy to address any questions you have. In the comments that were just asked, I do have a couple of clarifications, though, to bring up. One thing, the question of employment was brought up, I know within Culpeper at large, probably one of the looming factors regarding employment is the future closure of the Continental Plant with about 250 jobs. I just want to say for every building on our plan, that's about 50 permanent jobs in the building besides all the other jobs that it creates, so, starting in 2025, we'll also have, or I'm sorry, 2024, thousands of construction jobs as well that will continue through the construction phases, which last all the way until 2029. The development will be completely developed at 2029, but every three years, the equipment inside the building, which is valued at billions of dollars, is replaced, again, creating thousands of jobs from skilled technicians at high-paying rates that are brought in to replace that equipment on a three-year replenishment cycle. So, within the building itself, we're anticipating about 450 jobs, plus thousands of ancillary jobs servicing those buildings, more than offsetting the depletion of 250 from the Continental Plant closing. In relationship, it was mentioned, one of the strengths, the tax base, we're in the middle of an economic analysis, but initial economic analysis for the tax basis for the town in particular is about $4 million, starting in fiscal year 2025, increasing as the development grows to about $30 million plus in 2029. So, we're currently about to publish the official economic analysis that your economic development director, Paige, has asked for, that should be ready by week's end, but as you can see, the initial numbers are significant to the town's tax and revenue base as well.
$3 million by when? Questions for the applicant?
I have one. Big concern with most people about these centers is noise, and I'm looking at the chart here and everything, could you enlighten me on sort of what these numbers would compare to noise-wise, what, you know?
Sure.
What we can expect or hopefully not expect?
So, I think generally what people look at in terms of noise, I think the way that the code is written today, to be on, is it 60 or 75 decibels at the edge of the property line, so that's easily maintainable at this property, in particular, that's adjacent to residential development. If you think about the neighbors of this development, it's really well poised for that data center development. To the east, we have a complimentary data center, to the south, we have a significant green area and tree buffering before we hit Germana Highway, to the west, we have the train tracks themselves, which will produce more decibels than these buildings will produce. It's to the north where there's that real question, so we know that that land is zoned for residential today, but I've been in conversations with those developers as well, Jim and Stephen, we all know them, with the announcement that their land was also within the technology zone buffers, I think that they pretty much abandoned their plans to have residential there. That being said, we are working with them hand in hand, I'm on the phone with them every week as well, to make sure that we're accommodating their concerns there.
Thank you.
And I will just add, for the benefit of the record, that we do develop data centers in many other jurisdictions that are more, have more development of that area, and have more than done what was needed to do to meet those sound muffling and sound study requirements across the board.
I have a few questions. It shows in the county that proposed substation in the county of East Chandler and McDevitt, are you going to purchase that property?
We own that.
Oh, you own it already, okay, excellent, and it's right underneath the Dominion Power 115 line, how do you plan to get the 115 line from the substation to your site, or do you, does, do you own all the way across anyway?
So, the 115 line already crosses over property we own, so there will be further lines on our property, won't be visible to the road or anything that, to connect to the other substation at the far west side of our property, so that would all be concealed within our property line. Furthermore, from the switchgear to the buildings, all of that voltage work is underground.
Are you planning on bringing new lines in?
We don't have to bring in any new lines, there is, Dominion has a, not related to us, a line upgrade out there being contemplated, but it's in relationship to the general service for the area, it was a project that was in queue prior to discussions with us.
So, are you going to get the 115 from the substation in the county to the substation in the town?
So, we're planning to do transmissions lined within our property line, we're trying to figure that out yet with Dominion, their desire is to go on the south end of our buildings.
Okay, you're going to cross over Rappahannock Electric's distribution line from Culpeper DSP number two, how are you going to navigate that?
Dominion's designing that right now, I don't have the specific answers yet, but it might be that that's relocated. All of the transmission in the area is really owned by Dominion anyway, Rappahannock has an extremely small sliver of area that they're terminating their service rights to, and the town of Culpeper has already serviced, or terminated their service rights for the area as well, in favor of Dominion servicing the increased load.
Interesting. All right, you have nine generator pads, what's the decibel output of the generators under full load?
So, that's going to have to come in, the acoustic study, keep in mind, the generators are only running in a case of emergency, so these generators are not running 24/7. If the generators are running, it's because there's a problem, and that problem's going to be solved very quickly, but that's all a part of what we've proffered as far as our acoustic study, which is compliant with the decibel requirements already outlined in the zoning ordinance for the town.
Why nine buildings instead of like similar situations like Cloud HQ across the road has set it for three, Gwinix has set it for four, plus additional buildings, why the smaller buildings?
It has to do with the rate of ramp-up in tenant occupancy, so that fits really nicely into the size and scale that our typical tenant base, how they occupy and energize their buildings and the way that they install their equipment, so it's a preferred size by the marketplace, it's not really mandated by us as the property owner, it's what our tenants, those who are existing in the building paying us rent, require for their operations, so it's really about them driving us and speaking their requirements to us.
I won't go too much into your marketing model, so, one could assume that each building is going to be rented or leased by a separate tenant?
There's a possibility for that, although the way that it looks today, it looks to be a single-tenant campus.
So, why nine buildings?
It's the preference of the marketplace, that's the way that they look at it. I think the other benefit of this, one, we're avoiding all the wetland area, and if you actually look at the developed space, I think we're only building on about 40% of the developable acreage, so keeping those buildings allows us to keep the footprints a little smaller and keep more space to absorb stormwater management directly into the site. If you had one large building, you'd have a lot more runoff of that stormwater management, so to be honest, it's a little bit more about providing for pervious space and rainwater recollection on the site. When you do one large building, what you're doing is a lot more grading effort, so you're moving and disturbing a lot more earth, this allows us to tier the property a little bit and edge into the natural grading, which also helps us with the natural sightlines as well, meaning that the vegetation, both existing and the future planted vegetation in that 50-foot perimeter, will help shield the buildings. In the studies that we've done, you don't see the buildings at all through that mature 50-foot vegetation line from McDevitt.
You answered everything appropriately, as you mentioned yourself, this is not your first rodeo, thank you very much.
Oh, but my pleasure. Oh, but my pleasure.
Ms. Taylor?
I just had one, one more. It's awfully rocky out there. Are these buildings, do they need to be below grade any? Is there going to be blasting, things like that going on? We've got some going on in town now, so that's kind of top of mind.
Sure. So, actually, our geotech reports haven't returned much rock.
Okay.
So, it's actually pretty clean soil from what's out there. There's a lot of other jurisdictions, kind of further to the north, where we do have to do a lot of blasting, but from our current geotech reports, we don't see rock where we're having to dig in our grading strategy. I will say, we're just diving into our mature grading strategy. We're at that point in maturing the design, but as of now, we, we haven't seen a need or an identification in any borings or information that rock is, is out there.
Mr. Syria?
Excuse me.
Mr. Taylor?
Mitchell.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
What's the fuel source for the generators?
Sure. So, the fuel source is typically diesel fuel, although, again, that a little bit depends on the entity that's signing the final lease, so we're in conversations with a few people. Fortunately, no one will execute a lease until we're zoned appropriately and have the LOA from Dominion, which we should have in a couple of weeks' time. But generally, we're looking at diesel. Now, most people are moving up to Phase 5 generators, which are much more efficient and much more quiet, and also much more energy-efficient. So, for the majority of our developments now that are in queue, we're looking at those Generation 5-type generators.
But if it is diesel, then that's stored on-site as well?
Typically, you don't have any storage on-site from the diesel tanks, nothing dramatic in terms of that. They are, again, these aren't running 24/7. These are for emergency purposes only. When they do kick in, the emergencies are usually solved in a matter of minutes, not hours, not days, so they're typically by call-on-call replenishment contracts.
Just in experience, they are cycled regularly to make sure they're functioning. So, it's not that they will be silent until they're needed. They are regularly run to make sure that...
It's certainly not a daily activity.
No.
When you say for, initially four up to, and I know these are not contract numbers or estimates, but four to $30 million tax base, you do mean the, the value of the property?
So, what that is, um, so your Economic Development Director has an initial economic study, and we're working to publish the final, which includes more. What that's based on is strictly the town's personal property tax and real estate taxes combined, and the reason that it increases over time is as more buildings, they're not all being built as ones. They, they, as the buildings come online, obviously, the tax basis increases.
But that's the base number, that's not the revenue number? Or is it the revenue?
No, it's the revenue.
That's the revenue.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay. Robust.
The, the base number's in the billions.
That makes, okay, that sounds right. And so, at 50 per bill, anticipated independent construction operational base, approximately 50 personnel per building, uh, for building, that is 450. So, it's still relatively low density.
Correct. If you're looking at it for square, yeah.
As a package, as a package number, it's, it's, it's relative to the town size, it's significant employment.
I hope so. If you're comparing it to a logistics facility, absolutely. It's a low headcount per number of jobs created or manufacturing facility. I think when you look at all the ancillary jobs, we're also hoping that there's opportunity to partner with Germana Community College and, you know, maybe other institutions to hone some of those technical programs. I know they have a really profound MEP and engineering practice there for servicing those functions. We're hoping we can work with the educational institutions to also create specific jobs to build a, a degree program around data center technician work, because we will need significant workforce for all of those server equipments. And it reminds you, they swap out every three years.
Does the applying company have a record, a track record of such sort of educational support, educational cooperation?
Across a lot of our developments, we have both in the data center as well as in the manufacturing world, we're working with local colleges to help make sure that there are either certification programs or full-out degree programs to help staff the types of roles that we need, which range from data center, also to advanced robotics manufacturing and some life science, technology, manufacturing jobs as well.
Documentary version of that information wouldn't be relevant to this meeting, but it might be useful to you as you go before the legislative body.
Thank you, I'll take that into advice. I appreciate that.
The height of the buildings is 63 feet?
We believe so, yeah.
That's pretty high. See, I've been trying to imagine what that means. How many, is that broken into, can you express that as stories? I'm trying to relate it in...
So, it's, it's a two-story building. It is at 63 feet, and then, to the point, the mechanical equipment and other rooftop equipment does sit above that. It is set back, it is recessed, it is screened.
But that's actual 63 feet of building?
Correct.
It's not a building plus antenna or whatever goes on top.
Nope, that's, it's 63 to the roofline.
Can you think of, you've been in town a little bit, you've eyeballed stuff. Is there anything here as a, like the church steeple, anything that would, that would be a conceptual comparison?
If I can, if I can jump in, just the way our code is written, a story is essentially estimated at 14 feet.
Right.
And so, this is a five-story limit here, which is how we get to the 70 feet. So, you'd be envisioning these being a little under five stories.
So, this would be, but it would be larger than most, far and away most of what we have in town, that's off to the side, but it would be. And is the, the vegetative barrier, it is certainly not in the first year, it's not going to be 63 feet, so it will be quite a presence as it goes up from the roads, from which it's visible.
So, I don't think you'll see it from the town because of the elevations, the topography of the town versus this parcel. I also don't think you'll see it on, coming in on Route 3. I think you could see it from McDevitt until some of that vegetation matures, and also the entry points come off of McDevitt, so there'll be two points where there are clearings for roads, so you'll certainly see it through, through those avenues.
What about the visibility coming into the town from, from down 2915? Any visibility there?
I can't imagine you would see it from there. We can, we can widen our study to kind of look at the topography for vantage points there. We haven't done it at that distance.
Oh, estimate or assessment or opinion might be useful. My predecessor, David, was keenly sensitive to the appearance of the town because we do, we are largely tourism-based, we're, that's part of our identity, our image, and so we're sensitive to appearance from the outside. I don't say it's a dealmaker, deal-breaker, but it's a useful, it's a thing to bear in mind. Last question from me. Does the company have any kind of, well, must-have data on generator, typical generator use hours per year or days per year? I, I will take your point you're making that it's intermittent, it's occasional, it's an emergency response, but do you have any sort of data on what that amounts to per year?
I'm sure I could find it. I don't have it off the top of my head, unfortunately. It's, it's a question that I can, you know, bring back for our Board of Supervisors meeting if you think that's pertinent information for them or for this committee.
We have a town council.
Oh, town council, I'm sorry, yeah.
Legislative body.
Yeah.
Generic. Yeah. But we mean the same thing. I think that would be germane, because I, I've been following the debate over data centers elsewhere and...
Sure, of course.
No, the things associated with generation are, are ones that, that members of the community are especially sensitive to. So, if you believe that your case is strong, that those aren't going to be an issue, all the ammunition you can array, you know, all this data you can provide, evidence you can muster to support that proposition, it strikes me would serve you well.
One thing that I would offer to this committee as well, we could schedule, you know, we're hoping for a positive vote this evening, but that doesn't mean we can't continue to work together and learn from this point on, and I would invite this entire committee, if you want, we can schedule a visit to an existing facility. We can even go to the heart of data center alley and sit there in the parking lot, and I'll ask you if you can hear a hum. I recently brought a similar county planning team into that area, took them into the parking lot and said, "Can you guys hear me?" And they thought I was being silly, but I was trying to illustrate the point that we are sitting in the middle of the largest data centers in the entire world, and nobody heard the ambient noise until I asked them to listen for it, and they still couldn't hear it over the local one-lane traffic road. So, I, I, we are absolutely sensitive and to the needs of residents and recognize the non-compliance of data center sitting in someone's backyard. That is not something we would ever send out to do or overcome or mislead anyone about. But I also think that there is a lot of salacious opinion in the news, and what I would offer firsthand is, let us walk you through a facility, let us give you a tour of data center alley any day of the week, and let's sit there and really take it in from our own experience.
And that's one of the things, when Mr. Cook and I were discussing the proffers and, and what they were, would be putting into the proffers, we had some back and forth on the timing of the acoustic study for this, and originally, we had requested that if they were to do one, that it would be done sooner in the process so that it could be addressed in the site plan stage, and, and his response was, was the desire to wait so that they could have as much detail as possible when doing that study to ensure that it accurately reflected it, and so would be willing to make changes at that stage to address those, so.
That's an interesting offer, and it's not germane to our vote, the vote we have scheduled this evening, but it might be interesting to invest, look into that, you know, just for information at a future date. And I imagine there's a variety of opinions, you're representing the applicant's point of view. We have some other members of the audience, we may hear other opinions too, other information, other experiences.
Absolutely.
We'll see how that goes. So, I said that was my last question, and it is. Anybody else?
I do have one question. You're going to put new vegetation in, are you going to be removing the existing? Or is that in addition to existing?
Our, it's, it's designed to be in addition to existing. One of the things we do, though, is take an inventory of the plants. We literally go out and count every tree, and we classify them as in terms of healthy, are they mature growth, are they full growth, is it ready underbrush? And what we want to come back and plant, local indigenous species that are high-growth rates and that are going to be healthy trees. So, if there's a big area of sick, ill trees, or frankly, you know, I was out walking the property today, and there's a lot of dead tree stumps, you know, we don't want to leave those in place and count those as vegetation. We want live, vibrant, healthy, indigenous plant base.
Looking at it, that blocks a lot right there.
Mm-hmm.
Without the higher trees.
Oh, this is all, this would all stay in place.
Oh, okay.
This is lush, healthy, you're not going to see the buildings over this, and particularly around Germana Highway, you have a density, and you'll notice our plan really tries to avoid the south end of the development. One, to maintain the wetlands, so right now, we're not looking at taking any wetland impacts, which, again, is another environmental focus of the project. And two, it's to provide a deep buffer there on that side of the development. So, we are planning for our stormwater management ponds to be down there, but there'll still be a big screen of this natural existing vegetation.
Pretty much, it will change our view for Route 3.
Shouldn't. Unless a bunch of trees die and I have to replace them. But I'm hoping that doesn't happen.
Unless your new trees outgrow these.
Mr. Flanagan?
I can't think of anything that I haven't already asked that's related to the rezoning.
Mr. Mitchell?
I imagine that this is already covered in the town, but there's a lot of electricity here and different buildings. Is that something that the rescue squad and the fire department are aware of in how to mitigate an electrical fire of something of this nature, or is that something that we need to be training for?
We, we already have existing data centers within the town and then the surrounding county, so it's, it's something that, that, again, I can't speak specifically to it, but my presumption is that they have the awareness and the ability to, to address any, any issue that should arise.
We do, as a part of our building commission, we do invite the local volunteer departments as well as bring in first responders from full-time neighboring adjacent communities and do usually what ends up being a multi-day walkthrough of the facility, doing a safety training, and leave safety manuals with the local volunteer fire department and adjacent full-time county fire departments as well. So, we do have a program in place to train both full-time and volunteer staff on how to handle these buildings, because if there should be an emergency, and I knew there was a fire a few years back on a neighboring property, and I think the feedback from the first responding team was, this fire didn't feel like fires were used to, wires burning is different than wood frames burning, isn't it? So, we're conscious of that, and we have a track record of helping to train especially volunteer forces on how to do that and give them the materials to continue to train new volunteers as they come in. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
I'm, I'm okay right now.
Um, shoot. Thought of something while you were talking, and I forgot now. Well, you'll be sitting, you'll sit down for a while.
Sure, thank you very much.
Totally pedantic detail, this is the planning commission, a committee would be a subgrouping of the town councils focusing on particular issues. Ms. Taylor here is a member of the town council, sits on several committees, this is the planning commission.
Thank you.
Thanks. In any particular order, would, would you like to address the podium, approach the podium, address the commission? Ma'am?
I'm the podium.
Okay. Is there anybody I'm not seeing in the audience who wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, so, all right. Close the, I'm going to close the public meeting. Mr. Parliamentarian, is it appropriate for me to address additional questions to the director after the closing of the public meeting?
We're amidst ourselves in discussion at this point, so I'd say...
He's not a member of the commission.
No, I know he's not, but we're in discussion.
Okay. Do you know how tall the buildings are for the Telemark facility?
I'm afraid I don't off the top of my head.
Ballpark, no. Okay. Again, I'm just like, I'm struggling for a comparison. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, we forward this to the town council through the recommendation for approval.
Second.
We have, pause for discussion. Points of view for and against?
I would just like to, to thank the representative for clearing up the, the questions for us. I learned, learned a bit more about it, and, and you all had anticipated questions that I wanted to ask as well, so good questions, all, I think we've done our due diligence. Thank you.
Well, to Mr. Hopwell for bringing this to the planning commission earlier, so we had a chance to see it and look at this prior to seeing it this evening. It really helped to understand the site and clarify our understanding of it, so.
Mr. Chairman, it's, I know, it probably isn't a requirement for the rezoning, but there is a pending traffic circle already planned for Germana and McDevitt, so I guess the traffic study's not required. Since we're, they're basically, trying to planning 250 people off Lever's Lane and shifting them over to McDevitt and, and Lever's Lane.
We'll likely work with them at the site plan stage on any, any necessary transportation improvements. Again, as, as noted, we're not necessarily anticipating that, in many cases, the largest impact from a transportation perspective comes during that, that initial construction phase, and that is usually limited in scope and duration. This one, the scope of it appears that it'll, it'll be longer, but we'll have that conversation, I think, more at the site plan stage than, than the rezoning stage.
Exactly. Yeah, would, so would it be proper to, at that point, to mitigate the, the impact at the site plan?
They, they will need to mitigate their impact for transportation purposes required in the site plan process.
I'd like to say how well-written the department report is in its summary of strengths and weaknesses. The development would increase the tax base quite substantially, as we've heard testified. The development situates utility-dependent user in a location that would not require expansion or additional utility easements to serve the development, so it's quite efficient, and it fits in with the existing infrastructure. And he's enumerated the, the harmonious and the one inharmonious aspect, integration of this development with comprehension plan. It's, it dovetails with the future land use and economic development sections. There's a little weakness with respect to the character of the, of this land, but things aren't always black and white, we have to be judicious and white things up. Also, I'd like to say, once again, how privileged I feel to sit on the commission where there's so many interesting and well-informed questions from different specialties. and well-informed questions from different specialties. I thought this was a really well-thought-through review, due diligence session. So, with that, if there's no other comments, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none opposed, the recommendation, the vote to recommend favorably passes unanimously. Is there any other business before the commission today? Any follow-up items?
No follow-up items.
Mr. Hopewell, do you have any director updates for us?
The only update is following the polling of the commission, because our regular, regularly-scheduled work session would've been Thursday, two days from now. We pushed it back a week, so it'll be March second, I believe it is.
And just for those who are watching from home, the issue there was we, according to the calendar, we would've held our regular meeting and our planning meeting in the same week. We conducted a virtual poll and in this procedural manner elected to move our planning meeting till next week so that they're not right on top of each other.
Our planning work session.
What did I say?
Planning meeting.
I beg your pardon. We, this is our planning meeting. We elected to move our work session to the first, the first, Thursday of March.
Okay, the second of March.
So, not this week, but next week in any event.
Because February messes everything up.
But, Valentine's Day, so. It's, there's some redemption there. Commission members discussion. Mr. Mitchell?
Two items, one for Mr. Krim. I think it's House Bill 1293 that's passed either the Senate of the House and it's gone to change over about short-term vacation rentals. And it was exempting realtors from any laws, something you'd mentioned. Basically, we as a municipality cannot put any restrictions on short-term vacation rentals if it is let by a realtor, as I read the law. Are you familiar with that one or tracking it?
No, I'm not tracking that one. There are some bills I'm tracking, but that's not one of them. I can look into that.
I believe, if I may, I think that one has died for this year, but there is an anticipation of it coming back next year.
Okay. So, it cleared one and just died from there?
Yeah. I think, I think the short-term rentals, the attempts to strip localities of the ability to regulate for this current year have been essentially beaten back. But, they're working, I think there's an intent to try and have some work groups to work through a compromise in the upcoming year to come up with language. So, we're still proceeding in terms of our ordinance update with what we had contemplated in there. Again, we'll see what happens with the General Assembly. Those, the ability that we have to regulate it in the way that we proposed may still be stripped in the General Assembly, but I believe for the time being that we're okay.
Thank you. Second question. I got a lot of people asking about chickens, and full disclaimer, I have them in town. The county is apparently proposing an ordinance that they're not permitted. Would that require, you know, town to comply with that? Is it overlap, or would we have our own?
I'd need to see. What they had proposed previously was in their zoning ordinance, which would not be applicable to the town. What we reference in terms of that is their animal control section of their ordinance, which is outside of the zoning ordinance. So, if they're proposing changes there, it would be applicable to the town. But, if they're proposing changes within their zoning ordinance, it is not applicable.
Pros and cons on both sides of it?
Again, that's something that in our draft, we are looking to address and provide, provide to allow it, but provide greater protections for adjoining properties.
Would that include not having poultry leave one's property? Okay. That would make a lot of people happy.
Yes, yes.
You can drive down Evan Street without looking for chicken?
Taylor, I'm sorry. Ms. Taylor?
Are you...
Yes, thank you.
Just, you made me think of something, mentioning a house bill. Was there one also referring to ADUs and not being able to restrict people from having an accessory unit in there?
There was some discussion about that. Do you know what's...
Do you know where that went?
I don't. I don't recall anything moving forward on that. There was the initial discussion of allowing it.
Okay, because I saw that one too, and I wondered how that would affect us.
It's part of a larger conversation about affordable housing. And, you know, there's, politics make strange bedfellows. So, there's been some strange bedfellows on that particular issue. But, I, you know, I don't think anything dramatic's gonna come out of this General Assembly.
Syria? Mr. Flanagan?
I don't know why the chicken crossed the red.
Get away from the zoning statute.
To get into the county.
Yeah. I, just before, I just wanna say, the director had undertaken to circulate the pending statute, the wording of the pending statute with respect to Airbnb's pursuant to previous discussions. He and I touched base on it, and he informed me that it was probably dead for this legislative selection. So, it's not that he didn't follow through. It's just it was, it became moot. So, thanks for keeping an eye on that. Did I hear a motion?
Adjourned.